Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. It is 7:45 and this is our February 27th meeting. We are called to order. Please rise and pledge the flag. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Laura Hauck.
Here.
Heil Schenk.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Sabah El-Zayed.
Here.
Madam President, I note for the record that we were in executive session from approximately seven o'clock to approximately 7:42 with regard to personnel and real estate issues.
Thanks, Al.
Okay, good evening, everybody. First up on the agenda is an award presentation from Mayor Beth Jackseer and Chief Beretta in honor of the Bridgeport School Crossing Guards, in honor of Crossing Guard Appreciation Day, which just recently passed us last week, I believe. With that, I will turn it over to Mayor Jackseer.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. This is a very exciting presentation. Tonight, I present these mayor awards to the best of the best, our school crossing guards. Technically, these integral members of our community are employees of the Bridgeport Police Department. And as the person responsible for the police department, I just wanted to thank them for their hard work in keeping our children safe each and every school day. Just earlier this month, on February 7th, was National School Crossing Guard Day. So I wish to take a moment to thank our crossing guards, and I hope that you'll join me in giving them a round of applause as we thank them for their service and give them some fun certificates in honor of their service to the Bridgeport community. So please join me. All right, so I'm hoping that our crossing guards can join me, our crossing guards can join me up at the podium so we can do a little presentation ceremony. So I have an award for Linda Colbertson. Thank you very much. We have Bill Helsel. Mary Ann Helsel. John Puzio. Rich Riley. And last but not least, we have Felix Zalinski. Congratulations. I imagine they want photos of some sort.
Oh, okay.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I wanted to share my appreciation as well. Thank you to all the crossing guards. I know that, you know, you make us safer, but you also make our mornings and evenings really fun. You know, everyone from my daughter to other kids, and I know Vice President Tony as well, the kids have so much fun. There's fist bumps, there's high fives, there's good mornings. It kind of, you know, it starts and ends their day. So I think it's fantastic that we have such a great group of, of our team. We love you guys. I think it's something that's really special about Bridgeport. You know, anyone can drive to school, but walking to school is really special and a big part of childhood, and I'm thankful that we're able to do it and thankful for you for allowing us to keep our kids safe and have some fun. And certainly stay for the rest of our exciting agenda, but if you'd like to go home and get some rest or watch some TV, you're welcome to do that as well. So thanks for coming out.
All right, thank you, President El-Zayed, and thank you all again. Congratulations.
Before the crossing guards leave, maybe they want to stay for the next one because it's another one of the crossing.
Thanks, Tony.
Next up, we have another award presentation, and this is the presentation of the inaugural Good Citizen Award, and our first ever recipient is Mr. John Puzio. And this is presented by Dr. Ray Abdallah of the Bridgeport Business Association. And I guess with that, I would welcome Dr. Ray to come on up to the podium if you have a few words to share. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, John. See, that's why he's the Good Citizenship Award winner. Okay. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Ray Abdallah. I am the chairman of the Bridgeport Business Association, and with me tonight, I have co-chair Dr. Lauren Brennan from Phoenix Physical Therapy, and we have Wendy McLeahan. Wendy is the wife of Dr. Craig McLeahan of the Bridgeport Animal Hospital. Wendy is here tonight to represent the co-chair, Dr. Craig McLeahan, and we have a fourth co-chair is John Keen from Farmers Insurance. And we all want to thank you for hosting us tonight, Ms. President, Council President El-Zayed, Council Chief Mayor, Mr. Bello, Mr. Phillips. Again, thank you for having us out tonight, and we are here to thank the council and the professional administration just in general for all the support and the encouragement you give to the businesses in the community. And I can tell you that, you know, without the support that we are getting from your building, you know, we will not be where we are today. And we are pleased to, you know, to say thank you and honored that you are hosting us tonight during your meeting. The reason we're here tonight is we have a, an award that we give out to people, business owners, residents of Bridgeport who go above and beyond in their dealings with others, in their generosity and their empathy towards other people. And this award was the brainchild of Andrew Heil. Andrew is a 10-year-old Bridgeport School, elementary school student. Full disclosure, he's the son of Vice President Heil. And Andrew thought of this idea, and he, and we talked about it, and it finally came to fruition, and we are here to honor Mr. Puzio. So we're honored and privileged to call Mr. John Puzio up to receive his award. Andrew, I'm going to let you award that to Mr. Puzio. I'll shake your hand, sir, first.
All right, looking good.
Thank you. Congratulations, John, thank you.
Congratulations.
And before we finish, Dr. Ray, if you, for a second, we can continue to nominate others for this award for the future, and it comes from the business community that decides who it is, right? So for March or whenever, we can continue to nominate some other great citizens because, and anyone can, right?
That's our intention, Mr. Heil, and we are planning to have nominations, we're seeking nominations as we speak, of Bridgeport Borough residents and business owners for nomination and awards.
And I just want to say, and Mr. Puzio, when, I know that Dr. Ray and others, when they were discussing who would be the first one, it just seemed obvious that it should be you, and I hope that that's a credit to your character and how much you do here. And I hope as a crossing guard and as someone being recognized, you see that you've seen the past generations of Bridgeport and you've seen the future of generations, and I hope that we're living up to the community aspect that you have brought and that we hope that others will continue to bring as we bring new residents here. So that's, you know, that's our goal, and you're a good example of that, and I hope that our young people with Principal Bickhart helping in there at the school are moving in that direction as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ray, Laura, Wendy, and congratulations, Mr. Puzio. Moving onward, for council consideration, approval of the January 23rd, 2024 meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Gundrum, second from Mr. Heil. Any comments from the public or council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on, for council consideration, a resolution 2024-19 authorizing a license agreement between Bridgeport Borough and PICO relating to the use of a PICO-owned property located at 946 Ford Street. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a draft resolution along with a lease agreement between PICO and the Borough. This would be for the proposed use of a 50-by-50 portion of a parcel located at the corner of Ford Street and School Lane, owned by PICO. Address, as previously mentioned, 947, excuse me, 946 Ford Street. The purpose of the use of this 50-by-50 foot space would be for a beautification project, some landscaping, some flower plantings, and in all likelihood, a sign. And this was, this lease was sought, applied for and sought after, resulting from a grant application that the Borough put into the Green Regions Grant last fall to fund the said beautification project. So in order for, in order anticipating hopefully being awarded that grant, we would need to enter into a land use lease or license agreement with PICO.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilwoman Megan, second from Councilmember Kyle. Any questions or comments from the public or council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Apologies, Dr. Ray, Ms. Brennan, Ms. McLeahan, we certainly appreciate your attendance and the generosity in developing this Good Citizens Award, and thank Mr. Puzio for his attendance, both as the recipient tonight and the crossing guard, but please feel no obligation to stick around any longer than you already have. There's not much more terribly elucidating left on the agenda this evening.
Hey Keith, I'd like to stay if I can.
That's totally your call, Ray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I guess the same goes for you, Principal Bickhart. Thank you. Good eye, Wendy.
Happy birthday, Bridgeport.
Just for, for the record, you know, Councilmember Nolan just astutely pointed out that today is, in fact, the birthday, I guess you could term it, of Bridgeport Borough. On this day in 1851, the Borough was founded, and it seems like we are, what's the quick math on that, 173 years old? And yeah, looking, I've seen worse at 173, to be frank. So no, we're looking great.
I think obviously the good health of the Borough is because of like backwork and other healthcare here in the Borough, and I know that Dr. Ray planned that specifically to have an award, and you guys with the crossing guards planned it specifically, so that was very well done. I appreciate it.
I'd only add, Keith, that the, that first year was really rough.
Was it Salvatore Methuselah Bello over there? Right, very good. Thank you for, audience members, humoring our digression. Next up, for council consideration, a curb cut request. The applicant in question, property in question, 423 Hurst Street. Members of council, in your packets, there was a memorandum directed to myself by, well, to Borough Council by proxy of myself. The, as is customary, both Director of Building and Planning, Steve Wanzic, as well as our traffic safety officers, when we receive an application for a curb cut request, and for those that, you know, aren't familiar, a curb cut request is a request for installation of a driveway. When we received applications of this nature, both Mr. Wanzic and our traffic safety officers go out and review the block, the surrounding area, make sure that the applicant has the requisite minimum space size requirements available or necessary for a, at least one full-size parking stall, which is a minimum of nine feet by 18 feet, and also looks at the other surrounding landscape and environmental factors of that block. I would direct you to the memorandum from Building and Code Officer Wanzic dated February 8th, where it says, "The applicant at 423 Hurst Street has requested a curb cut at the front of their property. Upon a review of the request and a site visit by both myself and our traffic safety officers, it is recommended that the request be denied. The approval of the request would eliminate two on-street parking spaces in order to accommodate one off-street parking space." In situations like this, you know, I know that in recent years, we have seen a handful of requests for curb cuts, installation of parking spaces or driveways at the rear of a property, coming off of an alley. In such situations such as those, it is, you know, a no-brainer, for lack of a better term. There's no loss of on-street public parking, and so those are rather easily approved. However, when somebody is requesting the installation of a parking space along the frontage of a street, their street frontage, yes, butting a street front, you have to take a look at the overall conditions of the, of the block and the parking density, the parking problems. And being a small borough like Bridgeport, nine times out of 10, a block is probably going to have some, some parking problems. And in a case such as this, it's unfortunately, it's a numbers game. You know, we would be sacrificing two on-street parking spaces for the sake of one off-street parking space, and that is why the recommendation would be to deny this request in this case.
Do we have a motion to deny?
I'll move to accept that recommendation and deny the request.
I'll second. Have a motion from Councilwoman Kyle, and a second from Councilmember Megan. Do we have any comments or questions from the council or public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you, to deny.
All right, moving on, for council consideration, bills and salaries, authorization to pay bills and salaries for the month of February 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Have a motion from Councilmember Tony, and a second from Councilmember Mimi. Do we have any questions from the, or comments from the public or council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
All right, very well. Moving forward, unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business that any members, any members of council have to discuss this evening? Seeing none, we can proceed to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share?
I just have a short announcement for the Community Events Committee, which will be meeting next Monday, right here at Borough Hall at 6:30. I encourage anyone who wants to get involved to come on by. We'll be discussing, you know, the carnival, the 5K, movie nights to just, as a start. So I hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hi. Any other committee reports?
I can, we had our finance committee, and things are moving along with the regular process, and Keith is on top of grants and other opportunities for businesses coming into town. There was also a small business meeting, and Lennar came to speak. Dr. Ray, do you want to say anything about that meeting, just quickly, or could I just say it went very well, and businesses were able to hear about what's going on with redevelopment and ask a lot of questions, and I thought it was a very good conversation? If you want to, just be quick, just if you want to say how it went.
Real quick, we're honored to have Jennifer and Jordan, Jordan Good from Lennar, Lennar Development, and they came out, they gave us a very nice update as far as the building, and from what they were telling us that night last Tuesday, the 20th, that as they build, they sell. It's very impressive how it's coming along, and it's looking beautiful from what we're seeing, and we're just hoping it's going to be a beautiful thing that we're, like, when it's finally done. So we're honored as, you know, as businesses to have, you know, the people have that kind of interest in Bridgeport. I was telling somebody earlier that people are looking at Bridgeport more to make Bridgeport their home for their family or their business. Bridgeport's getting a lot of attention, Vice President Heil. Thank you.
And I'll say, it was a very well-attended meeting, I think, having guests like that bring more people out, so I'm looking forward to when you have other things like that.
Thanks, Councilmember Tony. I'll add to that, I also attended the meeting, and I thought it was fantastic that Lennar came out and spoke to all the businesses. I will say that if you're a business in Bridgeport and you're looking to connect with the new members of the community, there are some marketing opportunities. We won't get into the details here, but feel free to reach out to me, and I'd be happy to connect you with anyone there if you're a business in Bridgeport and wanted some opportunities to kind of boost your traction and interact with the new members of the community. Additionally, for the Public Safety Committee, we are starting to kind of formalize a request. We'll be posting it on Facebook coming soon, but we are looking for volunteers, individuals that want to, you know, attend the meetings, but also members that would be voting members of the committee as well. So if you have an interest, again, some of the things that we're looking for is public safety background, interest, engineering, potentially grant writing, project management. If you feel that you have anything to add to this, we'd be happy to kind of chat through. Doesn't need to be anything specific, but if you have ideas, please reach out to us, and we can kind of send you that information, and look out for a post about it soon with some more details.
All right, very good. Thank you both, Vice President Heil and President El-Zayed. Moving on to the mayor's report, Mayor Jackseer.
Thank you. I want to give a quick shout-out to our council president for helping to pioneer our latest partnership within the community, the Community of Colors Program. As she shared at the last meeting, this program enables student artists to be highlighted at some of our local businesses. So I had the pleasure of accompanying her and councilmembers Heil and Nolan to Junebug Sweet Treats and Fat Boy Deli a little over a week ago, so that way we could view these exhibits, and it was a really wonderful experience. I encourage all residents to make a visit before the galleries close. I believe it's later this week, so there's some good stuff, especially on the social media I've been seeing, so definitely check it out. I've also got another Bridgeport Founder's Day update to share with you. I know we're all eager about that. Please note that on Founder's Day itself, which is March 30th, even though today is the Founder's Day, as we have established, the event itself will be March 30th, and at 2:00 on that day, we're going to be honoring three Lifetime Achievement Award winners, and this year will be Father Ron, Fire Department Number One Chief Ken Freimware, and former Goodwill Fire Department Chief Mike Gallagher, Sr. So we finished filming some interviews with them this past weekend, actually, and we're all eager to share their Bridgeport stories with you. So please mark down Founder's Day itself. The whole event is from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., but definitely be there for these award presentations. And I also wish to share that my next office hours will be this Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in my office on the first floor of Borough Hall. And finally, please put the Motco Roots Bridgeport Edition presentation on your calendar for Thursday, March 7th at 7:00 p.m. This program is run by the Montgomery County Recorder of Deeds Office, and the actual Recorder of Deeds, Jean Sorg, will be leading the presentation, where she'll be discussing the history of several buildings right here in Bridgeport, and she'll also teach us how to search her database to find current and historical deeds that are on your property. So if you're a Bridgeport history buff, you're not going to want to miss this program. Again, this is the Motco Roots Bridgeport Edition presentation, and it's going to be taking place on March 7th at 7:00 p.m. right here in council chambers at Borough Hall. So I'll see you there. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mayor. Moving on to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Good evening, Bridgeport. You might have seen some additional electronic speed signs in your travels. You can look on Holstein and on Union Avenues today, and there'll be some speed signs there, radar speed signs. We're going across and putting 12 different locations where we can easily move our speed timing devices and conduct traffic surveys to better serve the residents. So if you see them, it's going to tell you what speed you're traveling. So you can look out for them. Also, might have seen the additional pylons, whether it's Ford Rambo on Holstein and on Union Avenue with our new crossing guard spots that just started a few months ago. It's just a reminder that if there's a pylon near, there's a crosswalk, and there might be children nearby, so it's going to be part of our traffic calming series coming up. You can look for pedestrian enforcement and aggressive driving enforcement and a DUI checkpoint. So all things that, if you see additional cars with red and blue lights on, we'll be conducting those kind of enforcement as traffic calming measures and law enforcement measures. We conducted some training. We were up at the Montgomery County Department of Emergency Services, seeing their emergency services outlay with all of the emergency management coordinators in the county. I just wanted to say again that what a great, what a great job and backstop we have at Montgomery County for their services with equipment and backstop with their training. So thank you to Montgomery County for all that they do. said some very nice words. And we also had our Congresswoman, Mary Gay Scanlon was there, Amanda Capaletti, our state senator, Tim Briggs, our state representative, and quite a few people came out to support our local Ukrainian-American community. We have such a gem here with Ukrainian Church in Bridgeport. It was great to see people come out and, and support him and support that. So folks who came out, thank you. It was an honor to be there.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Schenk. Any other announcements? If there aren't, I had one thing that just came across my desk this afternoon from the county commissioner's office. This is a new, actually, by way of the Office of Housing and Community Development of Montco. Last week, Montco officially launched the Whole Home Repairs Program, or WHRP, at the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. This program opened on February 22 for individuals to submit applications. And I posted this onto the Borough Facebook page earlier today, but I will also get it up on our website as well. The WHRP aims to provide eligible homeowners in Montco with grants of up to $50,000 per owner-occupied unit to address habitability and safety concerns. The application period will be open for an initial 50-day period, closing April 12, 2024. To be eligible, applicants must own and live in a home needing repairs in Montgomery County, and the household income must not exceed 80% of the area median income based on household size. And I'm sure that on the website or within the application, there is a metric or formula that guides you to let you know if you, if you qualify. Allowable repairs include, but aren't limited to, lead paint, asbestos, and mold remediation, heater system, furnace, hot water replacement, weatherization, for example, air sealing or installation of insulation, water damage, roofs, floors, ceilings, stairs, foundation, plumbing electrical, septic system, accessibility repairs, and more. So for more information, you can visit the Borough Facebook page. And by tomorrow, hopefully, you should be able to visit the Borough website for, for additional information and where to, where to check out this application and the grant guidelines. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll point out that this is a program that was passed by the state legislature, big bipartisan support, one of those things everyone, I don't know if everyone got behind it, but like that got a lot of support from both sides of the aisle and good government. I know I've reached out to Senator Capaletti's office, asking how it applied to Bridgeport, but that was before the funding was in place. So if you have questions, if Keith can't answer them, Senator Capaletti's office and maybe Representative Briggs' office can help with some of that as well.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Seeing no further announcements, we could proceed to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this evening?
I would just quickly like to add, Mr., one of the crossing guards, Mr. Siders, was not here. Sadly, his wife, Teresa, passed away, and he had had the funeral this weekend. The turnout was terrific. She was a longtime member of Bridgeport community, worked for the Upper Marion School District, and as you can see from the pictures, very beloved by the community, the fire department. And so that just shows the kind of community we have here in Bridgeport, but that's why he was not here today.
Seeing no public comment, council could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thanks, everyone, for coming out for adjournment.